Remember that I would do those, I wouldn't do that.
No, it's okay. Ten o'clock at this.
At Mounts basically. Well, the club.
You know, I've talked to you more than me, I can't afford to work with you.
No, I'm small. Small, but, 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 right, right. But I will get three, three minutes. But I, um...
I am still for my friend.
Who's on the rest?
I wouldn't remember his name.
And I'd like to be there.
I would not.
I start with apologies for absence.
Mr. Mayor, I have received apologies from all of the councillors, councillors, councillors on holiday, and councillors on the road.
Declarations of interest. Members who are invited to declare disposable opportunity interests and other interests along with the nature of those interests in relation to any item on this agenda.
Mr. Mayor, can I declare an interest in item 10, section 3? If the paperwork is clear, be aware of my relationship and also the manager of Stanley Road, which is our chairman. So I declare an exception.
Judges of state, as the director of the company, I declare opportunity interest for item 10, item 20, both, I should be okay with items 1 and 2.
Can I declare an interest in item 10, section 3, as well as an employee of the company?
Possession, appropriate announcements from the town mayor. Now, it is my great pleasure, even though it's in his absence, to welcome James Kane as the newly elected member to the Stanley Hall Ward to the council. And I wish him all the luck in the future when he starts attending the meeting and contributing to all our meetings. As an extra part of this, and this is as a mayor, or I should say, the chair of a castrap council, I was seriously disappointed and disturbed that we had to spend about eight thousand pounds on predictably wrong election. And I just need to say that because spend that money quite nicely in areas where it is seriously needed.
Mr. Mayor.
Can I ask how you think was necessary?
Councilman O'Neil?
Chairman, I'm surprised, even after that, we do necessarily, we could have done it co-opted. We've used co-opted in the past, and that's what should have happened here. But if you're willing to put the eight thousand pounds from your party for calling that election, when you led the call for the election, no one went and got the paper signed, then it was superfluous. Because even if you got an extra member, what good was it going to do you? You wouldn't have had any more say in this council chamber what you would have done. And we, we're still being able to say we were by you for years. So what was the point in having an election and an award that was so strong, it's the strongest Labour award in this town council, and you called an election? And did you expect to win it? Because I didn't see you working very much on it. So that's the answer. That's why you wasted eight thousand of public funds.
Right, Councilman. Councilman Kelly?
So you would deny the people of Stanley Hall Ward their constitutional right to vote? It's called democracy?
Okay, can I make a response to that? We are not talking about curbing democracy at all. Wait a minute, please, come listen here. We're not talking about curbing democracy here, we are talking about what is sensible. We are a castrap council, exactly as councillor Marshall over there said, this had no meaning. The democratic vote showed that you were entirely wrong in calling this election because the way James has voted so much outlasted, that it was the democratic exercise showed that you were wrong in asking for the election. But may I say, we can carry on this discussion about democracy in the election, at the end of time, the council has a lot of serious things to discuss as well. Okay? We love a discussion sometime, whenever it is convenient for you. Any further announcement?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just to remind everybody, please, send your phone to Silas, which tomorrow. We are filming the meeting, although we're not broadcasting it live. And obviously, I'm aware that someone else is filming the meeting, so remember, the public is also recording the meeting. So please bear that in mind. Is anyone else recording the meeting? Please make yourself known if you are. Is that known? Okay. Also, I believe that there's a number of people here who come in particular for item 12, which is the Louisa, Boris and Maury. So, Mr. Mayor, it may be advisable if the council intends to move that item up the agenda, deal with that after the meeting.
I move that if you do, that's up to me to decide. Any exceptions, Mr. Mayor? Sorry.
Second?
No? No, I'm asking for any public participation, anything the public needs to say about anything that is happening on the agenda today. There's two hands up there, three hands up.
So John Caulfield, was that you, Billy?
Yeah.
And gentleman over there, sorry.
Simpson, eh, Simpson? Okay. There's four people there, is it?
Yeah.
Jackhead. Right, so there's four people. So may I say that we allow fifteen minutes for public participation? So I might have to curb each of you to about three minutes speaking to me so that we can hear all of you. May I ask the gentleman in the back space, please?
Good evening, everybody, I'm John Caulfield, for the Road Safety Initiative in Stanley. Last meeting, that full Stanley Town Council meeting, I brought to the council about John Hollathorn, who basically runs the Speedwatch Initiative in Stanley. And there was a bit of controversy over him being attended a meeting, which was for Projects and Initiative Committee on Tuesday, the eighteenth of July. When I come to the meeting, it was said to me and in this room that John was not actually invited to the meeting. I've got his email here, and I've got a copy for members saying that he was invited, and it says, Alan, sorry, it came from Nicola James, says, hi, John, Alan, happy to for you to attend the Projects and Initiative Committee meeting next Tuesday, the eighteenth of July. Now, I want to know why the town clerk said to me he wasn't invited to that meeting, and he wasn't invited to speak at the meeting. Now, I don't appreciate the town clerk giving misrepresentation to meetings, when we've got evidence here that he was invited to speak.
Okay, but, but, can I answer your question?
Yeah.
What I said to you was that there wasn't time for John to do a twenty-minute PowerPoint presentation. Quite happy for John to come to the meeting, and we had other partners who came to the meeting and provided, you know, some information, a piece of paper, a report, a brief update. John wanted to do a twenty-minute presentation, which the chairman, who was councillor, said we didn't have time for. Now, that's what happened. And I presently am accused of misrepresenting anything.
No.
You've got an email that was sent to John from a third party, not me.
I've got this.
Says you can come to the meeting.
Yes, but it says that you were happy for him to attend.
Yes, and he did. I wasn't.
Yes, he did attend, but then, one, one... Alan, if you want to shake your head at me, we won't have this discussion, why don't we have it elsewhere? But I am not having, I am not having you...
Chairman, as I said, it's not the meeting, Sean, hang on.
As the, as the town clerk has said, we were perfectly happy for him attending the meeting.
So why, why did Mr.?
Wait a sec, wait a sec, for God's sake, wait a sec. What we couldn't have without something being put on the agenda, without a space being put on the agenda for a twenty-minute PowerPoint presentation, which is what he wanted to do, we said that we couldn't do that without you knowing. So we couldn't put in a twenty-minute PowerPoint presentation in the middle of an agenda which was not ready to cope for that. And that's why he was refused a chance to speak. He could have spoken, no one would have stopped him from speaking, exactly as some of the other people who participated did. But we couldn't put aside a twenty-minute presentation. Then he would have to come and tell us he wants to give us a specific presentation of twenty minutes, exactly as anyone else who comes and participates over here does, and we would have been perfectly happy of tolerating you. And that's our response to what you have to say.
Well, I don't, I didn't like that.
That's fine, that's a part that has to be taken outside, the council has dealt with it, and if he wants to give a presentation, then we are perfectly happy listening to a presentation from him, which the agenda will cope with. Without that being put on the agenda as a twenty-minute, if it is two minutes or three minutes, we can accept that, but not twenty minutes.
But what, what, what I'm bringing, what I'm bringing back today is why didn't Mr. Shaw say in the last meeting that he wasn't invited, when I've got the evidence here? Now, I had to go away and ask John for this evidence before I could reply to you, Alan.
John, will you calm down, please? Right, first, one, one thing. The first thing is, you know who I am, you know where I work, you know my telephone number, you know my address. Why have you waited between one full council meeting and the next? Why didn't you just send me the email, phone me up, have a conversation with you? I don't understand.
Because this needs to be...
Because you want to grandstand in the council meeting. And the fact is, I never mistook anybody, John. What I said was, we didn't have time for John's presentation he wanted to do. I never said that he couldn't come up.
My point of order, Mr., my point of order. I've had the question, if not for our consent behind it, and I suggest that the clerk gives a written response to the question that's been asked, and if we move on to the next question, because the majority of people indicated they want to speak, and I think we should give everybody a chance, otherwise we're on a hold, thank you.
Mr. Nixon?
Thank you, Chair. Before I start, Alan, are you gonna do an email from Ron?
I don't want the email from Ron today, the email will be, I'll load it back, the email will be getting loaded back. So it wasn't going to know, because I wanted to...
That's me presenting the view, go on.
Yeah.
Just thought I'd let you know. Right. I would like to throw the item twelve of the agenda, the reason of my memorial, the reason of my memorial. To my knowledge, if I was in the audience, this item was discussed at an earlier full council meeting. And it was decided and passed by full council that the original memorial stone would remain in Anfield Plain. I would like to know who came to the clerk with this compromise solution, that in fact no solution was needed, as it was finalized earlier. Whoever approached the clerk should have been informed that a decision had already been reached, democratically voted on and passed. The clerk could then have had a different conversation about erecting a copy by the Louisa. Could the clerk tell me who gave them permission to have further discussions with other parties, when it was already passed by council? And did he in these discussions include the Anfield Plain councillors? If there is a feeling for a copy to be erected, then let the original remain in the area and place the copy in the other location mentioned. May also say that this item should not be on the agenda, as per standing orders, once voted and passed, a motion cannot be overturned in six months, and if councillors wish to do it earlier, then by the rules, eleven names should be sought and published, and then it would put on the next council agenda. Last week on the Stanley chat site, a gentleman asked why the body was still up around the glass area by the Louisa. It was answered by another gentleman, it's for, and I quote, 'memorial for Pitts'. So it seems to some this already has been signed, sealed and delivered. I feel that a small group of one of the snowed-up people of Anfield Plain, the church elders, and they have already had local meetings with residents, church and connected families, all saying that it should remain in the local area. A decision has been made at full council, going to remain in Anfield Plain, which it seems is now about to be reneged on. If this, if this is, if isn't an insult to Anfield Plain, then I don't know what is. I know the local partnership leaders and committees, New York, New, New York, New Caio, Anfield Plain and Catchgate, are disgusted to see this on the agenda again. And all say, if this, if they want a copy, then it should go for the Louisa. I would be interested to hear what each of the Anfield Plain and Catchgate Area councillors made of this, and I wish to let it be heard in the interview.
Okay, Billy. Firstly... Sorry, can I just respond to, respond to, just a minute. First thing, Billy, I don't need permission to speak to people in the community, mate. Sorry, you're saying who did you get permission from to talk to people about this? I can talk to anybody, that's my job. Second thing is, you're quite right about the standard orders and about the six months rule. The two exceptions are, as you probably already know, because you were a serving councillor, is seven point one, a resolution shall not be reversed within six months except by a special motion which requires written notice by at least eleven councillors to be given to the proper officer, or by a motion moved to the centre of the recommendation committee. So the two ways for someone to come back on the agenda is, it goes to a committee into recommendation, or I get a signed motion from eleven members, and that's got twelve signatures on it. So I've accepted that motion. So why is it back on the agenda? Because I've been asked to put it back on the agenda by a motion signed by twelve members of council. That's why it's back on the agenda. Who's proposed the compromise? Well, the compromise has been discussed by a number of people, I'm just reporting what I've been told. I have not discussed it. So, you know, the item is, it's on the agenda for discussion, and I imagine there will be a full and frank discussion when it's dealt with.
May I reply back to you, Alan? Just for a second.
Chairman, no, that's not the procedure. You ask your question, you get the answer, and then that's it. And it's now for fifteen minutes, it's legal, it's no issue. Check it, and I think we should allow members, all the members of the public...
Chair, there's a couple of things that's concerning me. We've had two people turn up at council meeting here and make accusations, serious accusations about our head of paid service, and it's absolutely disgusting. You turn up here in a public forum, Chair, and making these attacks in a public meeting. This is a political body...
Point of order, Chair, point of order, Chair. I'm being accused of something, I would like to...
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, if this gentleman wants to shut up, then there's only one option that you have. And I'll move that motion, and if you're not careful. He's asking questions, now he wants to remain quiet, while I'm accused of something.
Please, please. Sorry, sorry, Chair, so I'm, I'm concerned here that our head of paid service is getting the public dressed in the down, but things based on nothing more, Billy, than pay save and tilt out in my mind. So I think we need to move on from that, but we need to be mindful that what people say here is an accusation not just against our head of paid service, but against this council, and this council has the right to take legal action to protect our head of paid staff, right? So I want that admitted, and that's a fact.
And I want five minutes, that is.
Secondly, here, sorry, I may, I just want to make the point, that any decision that we take as politicians in here, I think we would all agree, needs to be the right decision. It needs to be the right decision by our communities and the people who've elected us. So for me, if we've had an opportunity to take on board views and opinions, and we're going to get on to this discussion in a minute, and everyone in the room around this table who've been elected will get a chance to have their say, but as part of any consultation, there's nobody more important with this than the families who were affected by the mine disaster. And for me, we'll move on to that discussion, but they are integral to where the final resting place is for that memorial. Here, here, please, here, here.
May I ask a person in the corner there to speak, please? All I can say is, in a very short time, the church demanded that there was a public consultation where the memorial should go. And the members of our group, the families and the committee and those that put the memorial there, turned up at the meeting. There was three motions, one from a gentleman to put it next to the General Gallery at Anfield Plain, which received no support. The second was to put an Anfield Plain by another gentleman, and this also received no support. The third, put by our group for the memorial to come back to Stanley, where it should have been in the first place, got overwhelming support, and the result was, the church council handed it to the AAP for the memorial to come back to Stanley. Having waited several months for the AAP to come up with what was happening, he then handed it back to the town council, who had a meeting, and all this time, we were in the impression the memorial was come to Stanley. Three quick points. All the men in that disaster were employed by the Louisa Colery. The second point, all the men killed and injured in that disaster were in the Louisa Miners Lodge. The third thing was, the reason, the only reason I took the memorial to Anfield Plain in nineteen ninety-seven was the fiftieth anniversary. There was only a few widows left alive. There was a rush to get the memorial in place at the suggestion of a friend of mine, Wilkie Burley. Now, we took this on board, we went to the local councillors, and they all told us we would never get planning permission in time for the fiftieth anniversary. So in desperation, I hunted round, and I found a man at Anfield Plain, the vicar of St. Adrian's Church, who one hundred percent backed it. And I may tell you, all we got from him and his church members was total cooperation. All we've had since then is total conflict, and I'd like to remain in the committee. I don't think this is a political football. This is a personal thing for the families and the friends that were killed. And I would ask you to give a due respect and return the, the Louisa memorial onto a side of the Louisa at the earliest possible date. This is the seventieth anniversary this year, I was informed by the eighth thing, we were aiming for the twenty-third of August this year. It's long past and gone, and I only found out two days before the twenty-third of August, that it had been immediately passed it for both Anfield Plain, which none of us had been consulted. The church still insists that this memorial was only placed with the consultation of the local people. Thank you.
Can I just say, my father was one of the victims, by the way, at forty-seven. And I would like to use the analogy of the people who were buried in the fields of France. The reason they're buried there is purely economics. To fetch so many people back was totally uneconomic. It would be, it would be the wishes of all the people, relative like myself, for these people to be buried in the place they were born. So I'll get off that subject, and it's not a matter of Anfield Plain versus Stanley. It's purely a matter of the men involved who died in the disaster. Now, the biggest majority, democracy was mentioned here, and people being offended. What I would like to say, from a democratic point of view, of the dead men who can't come here and speak, these men, the biggest majority belonged at Stanley. And they, like was already said, belong to the Stanley Lodge. In my particular case, he lived in Stanley, but not just on a singular of my father, but of the biggest majority of the people lived in Stanley and worked for the Louisa Colery. Circumstances being what they were, as just been explained, it ended up at Anfield Plain for a short-term solution, and it ended up much longer, but that's politics, right? I would like the men who can't speak, all unsinners, the biggest majority belonged in Stanley, they worked in the Stanley pit, the Louisa, they used the Anfield Plain shaft as a matter of convenience, because it was a shorter route to where they worked. That is all. And I'll respect it. It's not a matter of offending people in Anfield Plain, it's a matter of respecting the wishes of the people who were deceased. Thank you very much.
Was there under progress, just please, you've got about two minutes, if you need to keep it very...
That's fine, I'll keep it strictly to the point. I am the vice-chair of the Catchgate and Anfield Plain Partnership. I have the chair here with me. We have spoken to so many people in Catchgate and Anfield Plain, and another local historian, who was told us that the majority of the people down the mine came from New Caio, Anfield Plain, Catchgate and Tangle Lake. Now, if that doesn't give these people the right to keep their thing, then why on earth... And it wasn't a short-term solution either, it was there because nobody else wanted it. We wanted, so we would like to keep it.
Thank you. Thank you. For the public meeting, and I go on to item five with the confirmation of confidence to approve the current record and sign the minutes of the twenty-second of July, two thousand thirty, definitely considered. It's on my dashboard. Does anyone move it? Seconded, please. Seconded, please.
Let's agree. Mr. Mayor, there is an error on the agenda, I apologize. It says that the minutes of twenty-seven to July are about twenty-six, and the minutes itself are on break.
My mistake, twenty-third of July.
I'm obviously...
I'm sorry to disturb you, can I pull yours back so we can take his wheelchair out there, because he can't. He's just asked me to bring it backwards, obviously yours this one.
Oh, I can't, because they're up in the front. Mary, can I ask you to move it, so the chair can...
Okay, now we'll take item number six, which is the minutes of the other meeting. So we see the minutes, we see the minutes of the October September meeting on the Projects and Initiative Committee, because it has to be... It's the taskman beam. Would anyone move that as a full record, please? Okay, it is receiving.
We'll have a minute, we'll take one second.
Read?
Yeah.
Okay. Now we can go back to the discussions on the, on the memorial stone. Is anyone going to open the discussion at all, please?
Chair, I don't think it will be helpful if we talk right out the air, the motion that's been signed by the members, and then that's the position we're in constitutionally. I haven't been forward from there, thanks, Chair.
This, this motion, I believe, the mover is councillor David Martin. Having consulted with members of the public and considered the available historic information about the Stanley Mine Disaster, we'd like the decision taken at full council on the twenty-fifth of July to be reviewed. And on the agenda, the background information I've put there for members is that, now obviously in the community, strong feelings are building for the placing of the memorial both, and in terms of... for the placing of the memorial both at the current location, Anfield Plain, and in Stanley, and for the bit ahead where the men sended. A compromise solution has been proposed by the original stone would be relocated to Stanley, in the area between the Civic Core and the Louisa Centre, and a new stone more stylistically in keeping with the Jason Bourne memorial setting would be placed in Anfield Plain Park. Members of the public, relatives of the man, be encouraged to make a financial contribution to the town council to assist in this. Officers of Orange National DCC have agreed with licenses and consent would be required to place and maintain two stones, and with the AAP about further potential financial contribution. So I have, I have had a discussion with Dan O'Brien from the AAP about this. I didn't ask for permission, sorry. But essentially, when, as you all know, this has been going on now for a long time, when it originally came to the town council to consider when the memorial, when it was announced to be being closed, the town council then took a look at it and said that they would prefer Anfield Plain to be located. Subsequently, it then was, as Jack said, the AAP kind of took ownership of it for a while, and they had begun making inquiries about putting it out there. And then it was subsequent to that, just prior to my elections, that the dialysis wrote to the town council and asked the town council if we would get involved with relocating it, which council agreed that we would just before the election in May. And the position we're in following the July meeting was that I had made some initial inquiries to DCC concerning a licence in Anfield Plain. So where we are now is that I've made some inquiries about a licence for Anfield Plain. Dan O'Brien has obviously been contacted under the actual standing. We haven't moved any further than that because we're obviously awaiting the outcome of these discussions. Mr. Mayor.
Anyone want to make a point?
Mr. Mayor, as we move to the motion, we took a decision following the discussion, and it came to light that we didn't have all the information that was available, and so it was a bit flawed. Because nobody had spoken to the relatives. That was a big problem. And we took a decision, not knowing what their feelings are. And we didn't also take into account the report that was thrown by Jack Hare on the Louisa Colery disaster memorial. Now, Jack, not only does that, we also wrote a book called Coal and the Blood. It tells you all about the disaster. It tells you all about the different ones that happened round about. So nobody's challenged that, nobody's challenged this report, but we didn't have the right kind of information. And we took the decision, but I'm sorry, but it was flawed. And so what we need to do is to recognise what, what the people, the relatives and the families want, and what they want to be brought to the Louisa, where all the, as Jack Hare said, the miners were all part of the Louisa Lodge. I'm not going to go over that again. They all worked and went down from this area, but they were brought out in other areas to the matter. And I think it's important that we don't, we're making this an impolitical football, and it shouldn't be. We've got to be sensitive to people's needs, and I think we should have a nice little ceremony. And what we could do is to make a replica of that stone. If we wanted to take it over and keep it in safekeeping, then the council should have some share, and the council should have some share, taking notice of what the relatives want. That's why I'm here.
Councillor Kelly?
As you said, we are a catch-up council. What is the cost of revision of this process?
Well, Kelly, as councils have made decisions to have a replica made, I've not got costs for it. However, I don't think it would be a hugely expensive thing because it is a, it's a memorial stone. I don't know, I haven't got costs because council don't decide to make a replica. So I wouldn't have got, but obviously costs can be retained. We do have a budget, which is not spent. So if council decides it wants to do this, then they're in budget way.
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I actually do that? I did have a meeting with some of the family, and I did have a meeting with Jack and all of them. And it's certainly not eight thousand pounds. So it's not going to be just chucked out. You're talking about the stone, the exact stone, replica. It's a couple of thousand pounds. And there is a budget there. There is a budget there. I'm not doing what the officers have done in the past, where they're calling, putting the vote on things so that you don't have, where there's no budget, no money available, and you end up not having the money to employ the staff that you need. What I'm saying is, it's a collective project, there's money to that, and the glory is why this couldn't go ahead. And we can have a nice little ceremony and props something out with it, where they're feeling not only here, but in Anfield Plain. I'm going to ask the marshal to explain what he's just accused us of.
Please, please. Take that discussion on specifically issue somewhere else. What we need to do is talk about this. Councillor Kelly?
Thank you, Chair. Can I just say that I have attended every meeting about this stone? Mr. Hare's recollection and mine are different. I've spoken to a number of people. We've been good custodians of this stone. And the people where I live, in Anfield Plain and Catchgate, want to be the custodian of this stone. I'm not sure if anybody has spoken to the church because at this moment in time, the church is the custodian of this stone. I'm not sure where the AAP came into this because never at a single meeting I have been at have I heard that mention. Not once. I was very surprised to hear that this had come back to light. But I'm sure whatever's going to happen is going to happen. So as far as I'm concerned, and I'm happy to put this on record, as far as I'm concerned, I would love to be a good custodian of that stone in Anfield Plain.
Chair, I just think this is, this long run saga's gone on long enough to become a political football tonight. We've heard from the families of some of the people who were tragically killed in the disaster. I think we need to do the right thing and listen to those families. Therefore, I'm happy to second councillor Marshall's motion to relocate the original stone to the shaft of the Louisa Colery. But I'd like to add to that, that I also like to support councillor Marshall's suggestion that we hold a suitable event to properly recognise the loss of lives in that mining disaster. I'll put that to the council and ask them, we don't want to be in this end long, we put the vote, move forward, Chair.
Okay, the motion that has been proposed and seconded. Does anyone have anything else to say about this before we go on to a vote?
Sorry. The motion that has been put forward covers the relocation of the original stone and the whole event, but it doesn't cover the second stone, which was mentioned.
Well, I would add that it is important that the people of Anfield Plain are being good custodians. We have to make sure that they have a stone to be placed to where they think it should be in Anfield Plain. So we cannot be in the church of the church's problems.
May I then put it to the vote, please? Those in favour of the motion, please raise your hands. Those against, please. Any abstentions? Okay, the motion is carried. If you want to, those families, the people who worked in the disaster, if you want to leave, now the discussion for the memorial is finished.
Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, now I come up to item seven, which is election of a deputy town mayor, Donald Clark, I mean, Tom, Chair, deputy chair, deputy mayor. Can we have any nominations from anyone, please? Alec Clay. There's a nomination for Alec Clay. Can I second up? Seconded? You want us?
Some nominations. Those in favour, perhaps, of Clay to be the town mayor? Is he unanimous?
I go on to item eight, which is the correspondence.
Oh, no, sorry, there's no correspondence, Chairman. I've just added it as an article because I wanted to be on there as a standard article.
Item nine, the recommendations of committee meetings. Now, we've got the projects and initiatives. Now, we take... Now, we take the Christmas events first. Yeah?
Chairman, the project initiatives committee requested at the previous meeting, which was July, that a specification was pulled together for the Christmas event, which could be considered for, you know, for attending to certain supplies. The committee at the last meeting took the view that actually there wasn't sufficient time to pull together a bit, and asked for the decision to take it forward to council. Now, my recommendation, which, which appears on the agenda, but is repeated in the report, which has been circulated, is that we have insufficient time to properly pull together to attend the process for Christmas because we're in September now. So I would recommend that council just gives officers the working instruction to pull together the event in line with what's detailed in this report and in what we provided last year. And then, after my decision in the new year, we can revisit this in more detail if we're pulling together. That's my recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak on the recommendation? Can I take a vote on that view for all the recommendations and implemented recommendations? Those in favour, please raise your hands. Now, the second one is the plan of park and the council to continue providing events in twenty eighteen.
Well, the project initiatives committee did a review of the events we put on this summer in various parks around, around the area. And they haven't, they will, they will work out the detailed recommendation, I think, once council makes, if council makes this decision. But the, the overall feeling was that the events have been a success. They're appreciated by residents and appreciated to be part of these events.
Anyone to speak on that? And can I move that we vote on keeping the events for twenty eighteen? Those in favour, please raise your hands. Now, the recommendations of the finance committee. The first one, the MIF policy. As we know, this will involve chaos as far as the staff are concerned. And we're looking at a MIF policy, and a working group has been established. The working group will come back and recommend to full council what they feel should be done. So can we agree that the working party comes back and gives us a recommendation that we can then vote on? Is that okay? Financial information. The committee is requesting that the council authorises in addition allows for the finance officer to produce the reports and information required.
Yes, we do that. For the benefit of those that maybe worked with the finance committee and didn't work hard into the conversation, councillor Stevenson and Carmichael have done some initial investigation work looking at how we manage the financial systems and processes within the town council, and pulled together a short report which they put to the finance committee. One of the key things that they want to focus on is they want to drill down in more detail into the income expenditure, particularly related to the city. So they want to be able to identify, you know, for each of the types of events that we put on, what the contractual arrangement is, what the ticket split is, where the income is derived from, what the on costs are, so they can make a full decisions about what the offering is in the civic college in the future. Yep? So basically, because this one is requesting additional expenditure, the finance committee have looked at the staffing budgets, and there is on the first budget monitor, predicted unspent in the salary budget on existing establishment of around ten thousand pounds. So there is a little bit of flex in there. So what the committee is requesting is that council authorises then to instruct the finance officer who works whilst part-time doing all of the core stuff, to actually do some additional hours so they should can do that detailed breakdown from the report back to finance and installation. That's what you're being asked to improve.
Are there anyone, is there anyone who wishes to speak on this issue? Can I then take a show of hands that we approved the recommendation that's made upon? Raise your hands, please. Thank you. The next one is the DBS check.
Again, the Durham County Council has, really prior to the election, I believe, the last election, implemented a policy of compulsory DBS checks for elected members. Put to the finance committee that Stanley Town Council really should have a policy in line with Durham County Council's policy for safety purposes, to ensure that the members are given the highest standards of public office. And there is a small revenue budget set aside for that, but it may not be enough, that is the point. It's five hundred pounds of budget, it might come to more than that. So what the recommendation from committee is, is that we both adopt a policy for DBS checks in line with Durham County Council's policy. And if there aren't sufficient resources in that revenue budget, then we are going to give sufficient resources to that, so DBS checks can be carried out. And also that we arrange for the production of official ID cards for members to start. So that if you're not getting something at school, you've got a base to arrange it with your big story, and sufficient position or a council of the Stanley Town Council, so people know who you are, and the poster. And likewise, we have the same. So those are the recommendations from committee. Obviously, I can't give you detailed cost of that at the moment, but if five hundred pounds set aside, it's likely to cost a bit more than that. And I'll give you the full answer.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak on that? Councillor Marshall?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We discussed this in the finance committee, and obviously, most of the vendors, depending who asks for ID cards, the city hall will be jealous of mine. That one. It is sensible, because people should know who you are when they're in the public building, and should know who you are when you're out there attending events and functions, a farm clearing the park, which is very useful. People recognise that they know where I was, who I was from. So sensible suggestion. And I realise that the cost of producing the DBS checks has gone up a lot since we first put it out when we first set the budget. But I think it is important that people have the confidence in not only the council staff, the staff, what we do, and I think it's a sensible suggestion to start with.
Can I then take a show of hands that we approved the recommendation that's made? We should keep the stand up again. Keep the stand up again.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is in connection with apprenticeships. I was approached by Gator Council, who were offering us, on their scheme, Gator Council have a scheme where they will appoint people to various types of apprenticeship. The one that relevant to us were business administration and hospitality. And they will advertise vacancies. They will do a selection centre, assessment centre, and shortlist candidates, including the shortlist of candidates. Hopefully, who are local. Obviously, Durham County Council offer a similar service. And really, when committee considered this, they wanted to have more information about the various providers available because there may be others in progress. about the various providers available, because there may be others in private sector who are not Durham County Council, Gates of Council, who might be able to do a better package for us. So what committee have asked is that the council gives them the authority to evaluate local providers of apprentice placements, to make a decision of which is the best one for the STC, to authorize the committee to undertake the recruitment of administration, business administration apprentices for a 12-month period. Bear in mind that the finance and governance committee is also the personnel committee, as they say, although it doesn't say in the name. And to give some consideration to whether the council can also support the customer service apprenticeship within the city hall.
Are there any comments then?
Chair, just to pick up on the recommendations further of the report from the finance committee, that we've just asked, or granted and all agreed, that the finance officer is going to spend some time working with the chairman, the vice-chairman of the finance committee, unpicking some of the finances around the city hall. My personal opinion is that it would be wrong of this council to make any sort of additional appointment at this time until that review is followed through. So I'll just ask the finance committee, when they look at this and they take that into consideration, that there's a wider review of the finances around the city hall. And although this might actually be cost neutral to the council because of funding through Durham Works and other programmes in the North East Left, it might be cost neutral to the council actually from a staffing perspective. We need to make sure we've got a full and proper understanding of the finances and the staffing and the liabilities that those things put on this council. So I just ask you to consider that before we take on any more liabilities as a council in relation to the city hall, Chair.
Are there any other?
Understanding any of these here, so your council marshal is saying, but will we administer a number of stays in the office or on the top line of these stays?
Yeah, so we're talking, maybe it's my fault for way off word of the recommendation, but I tried to keep it as concise as possible. The discussion of finance and the request from the committee is to authorize a business administration appointment in the office, obviously with the STC separate from the city hall in terms of how we all run ourselves. And the last item is that we give consideration about similar in the city hall. So I think the council marshal would just say, hold fire in the city hall.
Are there any further comments on this? Can we approve the recommendation that we go for voluntary practice and keep the other ones on hold until the finance committee makes the decision? Now, we come to item 10, which is the grant funding applications. You can see the grant funding applications over there. And the recommendation from the project initiatives committee to defer it to the finance committee. And the recommendation from the finance committee is that we need to look at our criteria and policy for funding and that we have already put in a working group so that we can have a look at our funding policy and then come back to full council with the recommendation.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The recommendation from finance was that a working group be set up to review the grant funding policy, to check the new fit for purpose and bring some recommendations back to council. Unfortunately, because the finance committee was very specific about the members that were going to be on that committee, rather than the council of the palace who was incapacitated at the time, couldn't attend a meeting. I wasn't able to get a meeting together of those members in time for this meeting. So I had hoped that we'd be able to help finance, have the meeting, and then bring back a report, but unfortunately, the time scale was not allowed to do that. So what we need to do is get that group together between now, hopefully, and finance, so that we can hear some recommendations through the committee process. The third recommendation, which obviously we haven't considered yet, I know that there are two members of your pet interest that will have to leave the room. Three, sorry. But the third recommendation was that actually there is a separate revenue budget that relates to fireworks specifically, so that should be considered separately and have a side of the general grant funding process. Chair, from this end.
Any issues on this? Chair, just on items one and two of that, and obviously I'll leave the room wide. It's lots of, item three, as per the declaration of interest policy. I think for me, with any grant funded policy, you need to have a certain amount of it that isn't subjective. And I know, because I've personally, the groups I've been involved with have been on the other side of the table from this, whereas members, people are sitting and making a judgment on a project, not on its merits, but by a personal viewpoint or opinion associated with that project. And I think in order for the council to make decisions within the best interest of the community, we need to review that policy, make it a little bit more robust, add some things in that would filter out projects that wouldn't meet the criteria for legal reasons or operational issues, so that it's much less subjective and there's some more defined, very defined criteria that would lead us to a decision. Then we can have a discussion about the amount of budget and how that's allocated after that. But for me, the starting point has very much got to be on those projects and whether they fit with what we feel the needs of our community, Chair.
Any other comments on this?
Are there any other comments on one and two? Because otherwise, we're going to kick three members of council out.
No other comments, but the other two are acceptable by the council so far. Okay, so.
And can I just check that, Mr Mayor, I'm naming them by own accord, not because I've been kicked out.
Okay, we now come to the fireworks. Are there any comments on the funding for the fireworks, please? Councilor Nicholson?
It's not a fine word to say. I always have the same argument and always will, and tell them the same place. We pick up at gate, go again from here, from gate eight to stand, which is an expense for some of the people regularly. And I will always argue that, you know, every year as the purse gets tighter, it becomes more of a struggle. So yes, people from Chester Street who drive, or people from Sackreston or Constant or wherever they can get here, but a lot of that people having up the weight in monetary terms, struggles to get here, Richard.
Any other comments?
On the application, I've just looked at the lots of safe equipment. You see, all generators, pro-controlled barriers, toilets. I don't understand that all of it happened in the half of the last quarter or five years that actually needed, so why do you pick up these sort of things?
I'm sure the wear and tear does come into effect, mate.
Every year it comes, every year it's different. Wear and tear, the same things. We get some sand there, it's good, isn't it?
Well, I mean, if correctly, Chair, it's probably past councillor Carl Marshall that decided questions related to bringing back him to answer these questions.
There was a big sentiment to bring him back in to answer technical questions. If, let's make a list of those.
Yeah, okay, let's make a list of the technical.
The application form is a rule of bush. The number ten of the grant funding application. And it's meant as a government council, we're often doing it, we're here for you. We're the very key areas to go to, we're the previous five grand for them. The fireworks festival, these are the factors. We're often in the top. What do we want is to provide. More chance for the fast access, it's a bit late to make.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, these matters are all matters that council can take a view on. So if the form had been completed correctly, if things that you've asked to be provided haven't been provided, council's entitled to take a view on that and take them into consideration when they determine the application.
Are we allowed to ask those questions or just the first question on where is the proof?
Just the technical, only the technical question.
Are we agreed that we ask just the technical question of councillor Marshall and ask it in the firework?
Or any other technical question before I take the real name out of my mouth?
If this particular thing has already been quoted before, what the heck is it doing under grant fund application? I've asked it quite a few times.
Sorry, if it wasn't you, council come up with the people.
Not.
No, sorry.
If it's already been approved as a budget item, what is it doing sitting here?
What's, what has happened is that when the budget was set in January, a revenue budget was allocated for fireworks. But a provider was not. And immediately prior to, or before the election, there was a working group established to look at provision of fireworks festival. The working group basically said that it didn't want to make a decision and put it back to full council. And full council decided to defer it to after the election. And here we are, and a decision's not been made. So the reason that there's a revenue budget put in is because council decided to put revenue budget in in January, we said budget. But the reason that we have not decided who's going to be providing fireworks festival is because I've not been given any direction about how to do that.
That still doesn't rationalise the idea that this is on a grant funding application process.
I didn't say it was rational.
You did say that it's already budgeted.
Yes, but we're deciding now whether we give it through a scanning event.
No, the thing is, it's a grant funding application.
Yes.
Because it's come in with a grant. Right, can I explain, sorry, I'll try and explain the history of this. I know it doesn't make a lot of sense, but basically, last, until this financial year, there was no general grant in Stanley Town Council revenue budget. There was the Members Initiative Fund budget, which obviously you're familiar with. And then beyond that, there was no general grant fund pot in the budget. But we kept getting applications for grant funding and we kept granting them, even though we didn't have a budget set aside for grant funding. So when we came to set the budget, we established a general grant funding pot, okay? We've been setting aside revenue budgets for fireworks since long before I came here. There was a revenue budget for fireworks. We recorded all upside down and back to front. So the comms committee had a meeting, made a decision to go for tender, but that decision was never ratified by council, because it was not called as a recommendation by the decision. So when I came in to my first comms meeting, I was, I had angry councillors saying, why haven't you got away and got these quotes? And then I said, well, actually, council have made a decision that we should go and get quotes. And then we received a funding application from Stanley Events and it was granted because there was no time to do anything else. Last year, a funding application was received from Stanley Events and it was declined by the council. And although we did part of funding because some members wanted it, they're there, some money had been from the AAP and various other sources, we just funded or something like that. So the reason that this application has been pushed into this channel is because we had to set a criteria now for grant, we've taken that before. We have a former process. And the funding application arrived literally just after the July meeting. So the next available place for it to come to was grant funding applications in September. So that's why it's where it is. And that's why we've got a separate revenue budget. It's all kind of historic.
So what you're saying, this is not a funding application, it's a tender application?
No, it is a funding application.
No, you've already said the money's there.
Yes.
So it's a tender application now of who's going to deliver it?
No, we've got to decide who's going to do it.
That's what I'm saying, it's a tender application of who's going to deliver.
It's not a tender because we've not invited anyone else to bid for it. Tender is where you invite multiple people to bid. I've not invited anyone to bid, because council has never made that decision that I would need to. It was deferred in, it was deferred in May, in April, and it was deferred.
Mayor, just carry on from this. First of all, there is.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mark, how did that data come to you, Nicholson?
For me, we're exactly the same boat as we are with the Christmas festival. We've been, it's been here forever. Now it's five weeks away. So I think we should get the provider back in. David can ask these questions with the technical help that I've made for. But I really do think that we need to go ahead with it. What I'm looking at here is the actual, the fireworks, the PEA system, the stage and the compere, the eight jewels and the first aid plus nine grand. They're asking for £10,000 with £4,654.20 match funding. So I would hope that most of the stuff that David's on about will be part of the match funding where Stanley Events is providing, the ZE doors are open up, I don't know. So I would move that we'll get Stanley Events back in, find out exactly what the story is. And then what I think we do, we've agreed tonight, so we can move ahead and actually provide fireworks festival. Because the money's there, so somebody needs to provide it, so we'll get on with it. And then we need to have a proper tender exercise early next year and then set in September with more choice. Thank you, Mayor.
To follow on from Mark, the financial regulations that we agreed in May of this year clearly states for contracts to the value of and in between £5,000 and £20,000. We are reported again in Deverto of three of T3 S and S. This has gone on for years and years and years. And I don't care, hand on hop, I don't care who gets this contract. You know, the people like a fireworks display, that's up to them. But we need to do the process and we need to do the process properly. This is what we agreed and this isn't what's happened.
Sorry, can I just comment on that? Councilor Nicholson's quite correct in what the financial regulations say. I have never been given an instruction to go and tender a contract. So I've not tendered a contract. So what we've got here is an application for grant funding from a community interest company, which we can lawfully grant against a revenue budget which we've set aside. I'm just putting people to be absolutely clear, I've never been asked to go away and get free quotes for this.
It was going to be asked for in, to be able to, but it was struck because somebody, we had to declare an address. The government was struck with the events, the game work. And also, councilor Nicholson, the grant, the match funding was for from Stanley Events, but management, supervision, application, licence and administration.
Yes, and I was coming back in and I just wanted to apologise to councillor Tony, it's actually the line below the one that I thought.
I, councillor Marshall, we've got one question for you, councillor Marshall. Yeah? David, will you give the question, please?
So, have we prepared for ZE doors? ZE doors, generators, power stations, barriers, every year that we've got to be there. The council, the ZE doors, truly all the, what gets opened or activated here? Has someone suggested Jaguar Vans?
Chair, then councillor Tony's answer is, oh, question with any equipment, you've got to maintain it, there's a depreciation on the equipment. The barrier fence, unfortunately, if anyone can find any, they'll walk itself up from South Stand and up to Obeys, gives a shout, does that help reduce these costs? But we've got to transport it, we've got to put it away, we've got to pay to store it. There's a whole host of costs, the equipment. And what we do is, we've got a cost that we work out for any event we do based on the overall costs of... on the overall costs of providing that particular piece of equipment or that particular service. Now what we'll do in terms of the fireworks display in Stanley, that cost is much more reduced than when we charge it out on a commercial basis. For example, when we run, um, an event, the Spennyl Town Council, or we run a Christmas light switch on, for example, with Bishop Auckland Town Council, running events elsewhere, we charge them a commercial rate because outside of Stanley. And the other thing, from Chair to Warkmont, is that there's no cost on here for management and for the time for organising and obviously for volunteers, that's in there as match funding, because that's obviously a quantity of money that goes in to the meetings we have and the preparation of all the documents, the meetings with the police, and which all need to be done, because every event, whether you've done it before, is entirely different and you've got to go through the same planning process for the event, David, regardless of that, so I hope that's answered your question. I think we've had that question before, but would it be possible to have the cost for these two reactions? So Chair, in the applications, by the time...
I think that's beyond the technical question, we, this one is on the council question.
Are there any other technical questions before we, so that...
Are there any other comments on this? Like, we have had a recommendation from councillor Davidson that we go ahead and give the contract to Stanley Events. Is there any second of ours? Okay?
We have a second motion from councillor Tully, that we grant Stanley Events, if Stanley Events are going to put it on this year, then we come back after budgets and look at a more detailed approach for next year. Yeah?
Can we have a show of hands, please?
Harry.
Thank you.
All right, we'll get the rest of the Council back. For the benefit of those of you in Council who've been outside the room, the decision of Council is that we will grant the application for fireworks display this year, but after the budget set in practice in January, the Projects Initiative Group needs to sit down and the, the tender process for future years, as for information.
We now go on to item 11, which is civic regalia. The Council request you to consider whether or not additional civic regalia should be obtained for the use in the town where it's consored and the deputy town mayor whilst town official visits.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have to apologize to be put down, simply because it, it's a question of recognition out there, and I'm not talking about having a shade like you have. I'm talking about the ribbon with the, uh, the crest on and that type of thing, something quite inexpensive, so at least when people learn all from experience, and I was once in the council, I had more recognition than going out to meet people and writing things like that, and you had nothing, so you didn't, you didn't add up, you didn't fit into the picture, because everybody had recognition of what they're doing, and it's the same in, in, well, I've definitely, uh, you deserve to have something, but I don't want to spend, I would see how much that is worth, it's worth a couple of quid. Uh, I'm talking about, you know, very low costing, and I think we should get some prices on that to see how much it would be, uh, so that can have recognition when they're out there and the public recognise, see our part of the, the life organising.
Um, yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Um, when councillor Marshall has discussed this with me outside of the meeting, so I'll just put that out there, um, the discussion I had, I had with him, um, at my previous town council, the outgoing mayor, the end of their mayor year, used to present a little badge, which was an annual badge, round, it was the mayor of the town council, they had the council crest hand painted on it and it said past mayor on it, um, and they came to supply the ribbon, a broad ribbon that helped on to, and when you went to London, you could wear these things. Now the cost of those, because I got half a dozen made, because they gave a mayor for a year, was about 400 pounds apiece and the cost of ribbon was about 25 pounds. And I think that was the kind of scale you were looking at, wasn't it, councillor?
Yeah, and we didn't have an increase.
Yeah, but, but it was about that overall package, you know, you know, the full on ticket, you know, till...
Here's the question, when I asked that I was doing one here, the answer was no, then it was asking how much would this cost, you know, we had to go through the pulpit, this would cost, this is...
Point, point, Chair, is that I just asked, is councillor Tully making points from Facebook or ladies' own opinions, please, Chair, we help to be clarified whether he's quoted as chapter universal trying to run the council from a social media site or whether this is his own views and opinions? Thank you.
Uh, it's from social media, as you have, in the past about fireworks.
Do you suggest running the council from Facebook?
We've been, we've been proposed suggestions, run the council from, from Facebook, probably. Uh, but the class replied, this will cost the council, I think it will be more additional cost to the council. I agree, come there, Mr. Shaun.
Can I, can I just comment here? Um, sit down, I'm going to be speaking for a while, councillor Tully. Um, I'm an employee of this council and I, at this meeting tonight, seem to be getting attacked personally by members of the public and now by you. Now, what, what, what comments I've put on a social media site, my job is town clerk, I don't have to do anything on a social media site. I choose to engage on social media because I believe in the mission of this council and I want to try and support and talk to residents in, in the format where they're talking. Now, what I said on a social media site, when the motion was on the agenda for us to change the name of the chairman to a town mayor, and I said that's not going to cost us anything, should not be brought back to this council table by a member, an elected member of the council and thrown in my face as though I broke it a promise? It's nothing to do with me, David. I represented what was on the agenda at the material times and if you can't throw that back in there, I'm sorry, but they can't do that, that's irrelevant, this is...
The year of the year has not cost the council anything. What we are asking now is that, is that we see whether we can add a regalia for the console, which will last for 18 years, and the deputy mayor, which will also last for 18 years. It is a one-off expense. Councillor Davidson?
Thanks, Chair. In my mind, uh, well, most people probably know, I'll never be doing your job because I'm certainly not sort of room enough to go and meet people, et cetera, et cetera. So I don't know, I'm getting any of the functions that David's been to, but really, I can't see the problem with finding out how much the, um, the civic regalia is going to cost to buy, finding out how much it's going to be to buy and then also if we find out how many times we would actually use it, I don't see the, I don't see the problem in it. So I think the recommendation is only to find out how much to buy, um, to open how much it is to buy rather than actually send out the money, we'll just check what we're passing, so I don't see the problem with it, and we'll get it to come back, everybody had, um, more of a chance to think about it. We'll be able to see how many times we are going to use it, whether it'll actually, um, whether it'll let vehicle party for money or not, we don't know, we don't know how much it is. While I'm on, I just wanted to thank you very much for coming to present the price of our, um, our hell of a town area on Sunday, thank you very much.
Anyone else want to have a say on this?
Yeah.
Can we make a recommendation that the town clerk goes and has a look at costings to find out, well, what the cost of regalia for the deputy mayor and the console of the mayor is going to be, come back to full council meeting for the council to decide whether they're ready to give this grant. Can we have a show of hands, please? Who's against you or against you? Anyone else against?
One against.
Councillor, let's tell it. You've said several times that I have said it's a cash trap council, that we make it very clear that it's cash trap, because there are some people who go around and spend money when it is not needed and that's why we're a cash trap. Thank you very much. We're on item 12 now. We have just finished off, we're on item 13 now, so the time is, David, and venue of the next meeting, we're going to take a look at the 13th of January, the Saturday, the 12th. Sorry? Time to do that.